All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this first zoning workshop of the Milton Planning Board. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight. We appreciate you being here. I'm just going to run through what we're doing tonight. So we have a series of introductions of who some of these people with name tags are. Talk about the process and where we get from here to the October 2015 town meeting, and then the process to the town meetings in 2016. Give a short introduction to the various zoning articles that we, the Planning Board, are looking at for these meetings. And then we're going to be doing two interactive sessions tonight while we'll be looking for your input back to us. And then I'll talk about next steps at the end. So, first of all, this is coming out of the master plan, which the Planning Board unanimously approved changes to and accepted last Thursday, June 25th. And the Planning Board members we have here with us tonight is a full complement. So, in addition to myself, Alex Whiteside, Brian Fers, Cheryl Taggias, and Mike Kelly. We also have two members of our planning staff here. Bill Clark, the Director of Planning and Community Development, and Tim Swansky.
Julie's here.
Oh, Julie's here as well. That's right. And Julie Getman, our new clerk, so the newest member of the team. So, this process is leading to the October 2015 town meeting. And what we're going to be doing tonight is looking at a series of potential zoning articles that came out of both the master plan and issues that the Planning Board has seen over the past few years. So today, we're having our first kickoff zoning workshop. Then on July 28th, we're going to present and discuss the first draft of the proposed articles. And in August, haven't set the date yet, we'll do the second draft. Now, around this time, we're going to be needing to meet certain deadlines of the warrant committee and the Board of Selectmen to get on the warrant for October. In addition to these three meetings, which obviously are taking place in physical places, we're also doing input online. So we have signed up with a company called Survey Monkey to do some online surveys. And that's going to allow us to not only use the interactive sessions that we're doing tonight online, so for people who weren't able to be here, but also to do public comment on the draft zoning articles. We recognize that we have a tight timeline between now and October. And it's also summer, so not everybody is around. So we want to make sure that if people are physically here, they can go online and give us their comments from wherever they may be. So September will be our formal public hearing. So what happens is when an article goes on the warrant, so it's accepted by the Board of Selectmen to go on the warrant. It goes to the warrant committee for their review. If it's a zoning-related article, the Planning Board has to have a formal public hearing once that article is accepted onto the warrant. So we'll be doing our various public input, the draft revisions. But once we have those, that final language, we'll do a formal public hearing in September. And then, of course, October is the town meeting. Now, not all of the articles that we're talking about tonight will necessarily go to the October 2015 town meeting. Some of them are incredibly complex topics. They're ones that have been bouncing back and forth in front of the Planning Board as possibilities for quite some time. So we have two other options in this cycle of how we might deal with them. If the language is getting close, but is not quite close enough for October 2015, we could start the process up again in November to consider revisions to those articles, and then bring them forward in January for the May town meeting. If we think we're a little bit further out and want to do some additional public input, then we would aim for the October 2016 town meeting and start that process in February. So this year, it's the first time we've done something like this with this many articles. This year, it's really a short time period. Next year, it will be a longer process. So the possible zoning articles that we're looking at for this round, and we'll be discussing all of them at some point or the other tonight, are signs, condominiums, and that's two types of condominiums. We've broken them out into what we're calling the great estates, which would be large parcels of land, a significant acreage, and/or parcels that have natural resources, scenic views, or historic homes. So that's the great estates. The other thing on condominiums we're looking at is Milton has an edge along Quincy and Boston that's a little bit more urban, that has access to public transit and access to goods and services in our business districts. So we're looking at, if we allow more condos in those areas, because we already have some, what sort of zoning bylaw would that be? We're looking at accessory dwelling units, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. Bed and breakfast, lighting, noise, non-conforming uses, mostly in residential neighborhoods, and non-conforming dimensions, primarily of houses that were built prior to zoning coming into effect. Inclusionary zoning, which is addressed as affordable housing, and institutional review. So signs has come up for a number of reasons as an issue for us. There's been a concern about lit signs recently, and that was a Citizens article that came to town meeting. There are concerns about signs in residential areas that we've heard. Sign technology has changed a great deal since our bylaws were last written, and the sign definitions need to be updated. And there's been a lot of comment recently about how does the sign review process actually work? Now, the sign review is under the Board of Selectmen, and nobody has suggested taking that responsibility away from the Board of Selectmen. But there have been questions coming back and forth, both in front of them and in front of the Planning Board, as to how this works. We talked about the great estates a little bit, but it's been coming up because of questions about density, how many buildings we're allowing, how many units we're allowing in great estates, and concerns about preserving those large houses, natural resources, or the scenic views from a public way primarily. And this, along with two of the other things we're talking about tonight, is also coming up from a concern identified both from members of the public and through the master plan process of how do we create new types of housing in Milton to address generational preferences? And that tends to be older people looking to downsize from their homes, or younger people who want to move out for the first time. Single-family homes are not necessarily the most appropriate option for these two groups. And there have been trends in the real estate industry recently that look at those. So we're looking at how Milton can address those. Also, on the condominiums near transit and services, is creating the new types of houses. But as an issue of density, do we create more density? In other words, more units per acre closer to transit rather than in these areas that we've talked about preserving as preserving the physical character of Milton? And that's something that came out of the master plan. Now, accessory dwelling units, again, is a new way of creating housing types in Milton. But it's also a way that has been looked at around the country of allowing multiple generations to live together, but having their own independence and privacy. Maybe it's a separate entrance, maybe it's a separate building on the lot, and we'll have a look at some of these. But our current bylaw is fairly restrictive on accessory dwelling units. So what we're looking at, again, coming through the master plan process and bringing it back to people, is this actually something that people in Milton want to change? Now, right now, you can get a special permit from the ZPA. It's renewable every four years. Whatever changes you make to create that accessory unit, so a kitchen, maybe a separate entrance. It all must be done within the house. So there can be no indication from the outside. There can be no addition to the house to create the unit. And then when the need for the accessory unit is gone, the house is sold. The caretaker or the person who is living there has moved to another place. Then those changes have to be reversed. They can't be permanent. So one question is, do we believe as a town that we want to change that? And this is just a life cycle of the different types of units. So this has, and the image has yellow, so I'll read it out to you. So this has the family, but the young professionals, the students or the newlyweds here. In this case, the family, but this time it's the grandparents living there. Maybe it's a teenager who gets their own unit, and that would have been great as a teenager. And maybe it's a young family with the older parents living there. So everybody lives on the same piece of land, but has their own separate unit. And that's just some of the ways we're going to be talking about tonight. Maybe it's an addition onto the house, maybe it's a separate house, maybe it's within the current house. And we've got some images to show you. So bed and breakfast is another idea. It's one I've certainly been kicking around to talk to the town about and discussing in the Planning Board, but it's come up through other things. We've got some assets that might draw people here to stay. Certainly, we're close to Boston. But we've also got the Blue Hills as a recreation area that a lot of people like to use. And we have these colleges and schools where people are coming in for graduation, and maybe they'd like to stay in the same town that their children are graduating from. I will say that the fact that the town could charge some hotel tax on these B&amp;Bs definitely entered into my thinking on promoting this. But it's also a method, again, coming out of the master plan, this idea of preserving the physical character. We have a lot of larger homes that may be too large for today's families. B&amp;Bs could be a way of dealing with that. We also have listing on Airbnb. I don't know if you've ever looked, but I did a couple of date ranges, and there's some space available. None of it's regulated. Board of Health doesn't review it. Building Inspector doesn't review any changes that might have been made to do this. And of course, if people are staying in Airbnb, we're not collecting taxes or fees on them. So, but the more important point in that is that there's no safety regulation, and we may have a market. So, lighting and noise. Now, this has come out of two levels of things that the Planning Board has been looking at and also the Board of Selectmen have seen. On the Planning Board, we do have, and we'll talk about it later on, these non-conforming uses in residential districts, and how lighting and noise affects the residential neighbors from these has come up. We have institutional uses in residential areas, some of whom have athletic fields. The town itself has its own athletic fields. And so these are other areas where lights and noise can come in. And what's interesting is, unlike some other towns, not all other towns, we don't have a town-wide standard on either lighting or noise. So this is something that we'd like to explore and see if the town is interested in doing this. Now, non-conforming uses, we've been doing a lot of town meeting recently to address landscaping uses in towns, but there are other non-conforming uses. And the problem, possibly, with non-conforming uses is that you have to go to the ZPA for any changes and get a variance or a change to special permit. However, that non-conforming use was originally allowed. This acts as a disincentive for people to invest in those businesses and those buildings. So one question we are considering, and again, has come up through various work that we've done, is how do we address this? Is there a way of writing a zoning bylaw that would maybe put in some design guidelines, maybe put in some additional protections for the neighborhood, but also create an incentive for business owners to put additional resources into their businesses? And so we're going to be looking at some images in a few minutes of what businesses in a neighborhood could look like. But tied to that is what other regulations would be needed. And then do we, as a town, add additional business in a residential area? And so we're looking to hear input, not only tonight, but going forward on that. Non-conforming dimensions is an interesting one. And this was brought up by a lawyer who appears in front of the Planning Board recently and has to deal with the variances. The vast majority of houses in certain parts of Milton were created or built prior to zoning and don't necessarily conform to the zoning as it was later written. In fact, there are parts of Milton, the older parts of Milton, where you actually could not build those houses today. And yet we value those houses. They may be too tall, their gross floor area relative to the lot may be too much, there are setbacks from their neighbors may be wrong. And what this means is if you need to do a change to your house to meet current market conditions, you have to go in for a variance every time. And this acts as a disincentive to people to make those changes. And lifestyles really have changed. If you talk to real estate agents, they'll say people are looking for larger rooms. Instead of a lot of small rooms, they're looking for larger rooms that are all open. They're looking for different configurations to their kitchens. Master suites are more popular. These are not available in the older homes. People just didn't build that way then. So if you're wanting to change that, change those layouts, do anything that might involve an addition, and your house is already non-conforming, you have a problem. So we're looking at, is there a way of allowing these changes without requiring every change to go to the ZPA? Now, inclusionary zoning is an interesting one, because this has come up at town meeting quite a bit in that we have, the Planning Board has, sometimes it's been a Citizens article, sometimes it's been an article that we've worked with the Citizens to bring forward, the cluster development we did recently as an example of that, where we've included a requirement for affordable housing. And Milton is currently under the state requirement for 10%. And one question has been, should we do the 10% that we often have put forward? It's a standard means. People have gotten up at town meeting and said, "Look, we should have more, we should have less." What should we be doing? So affordable housing is important for many reasons. And one of them is a healthy community has people of all ranges of incomes. And how do you address that? So we're looking at ways of, different ways of doing affordable housing. And certainly, the condominiums, both types, and the accessory dwelling units would be one way of creating affordable housing with a small "A." There's smaller units, there are different type of units. They are almost automatically going to be less than a large single-family home. However, you also need affordable with a capital "A," and that's the affordable housing that qualifies on the state's subsidized housing inventory list. Now, the town recently passed or accepted a housing production plan, so we'll be looking at that. But part of that housing production plan and part of what came out of the master plan is looking at inclusionary zoning. So we've got a few questions about that tonight, and we'll be talking more about it going forward. And finally, institutional review. Again, there are a lot of nonprofits and institutions in Milton. The Dover Amendment exempts some of them from certain regulations, including some zoning regulations, primarily educational and religious. And I was talking with Alex about this a couple of weeks ago. And we do have institutional review in our bylaw, but it's not necessarily called out. Some people don't feel it's got enough review. Some people may think it has too much review. So we're just going to look at this as part of what we're doing. So tonight, we're going to be doing two interactive sessions with you. The first is a visual preference survey, and this is the physical character of the town. We're asking you to look at various different things. Signs, the condominiums, the accessory dwelling units, bed and breakfast, and business in a residential district. And tell us how you feel about the look of these. Then we're going to let you get up and move around, and we've got questions at each of the tables here that are specific to the topics I just introduced. They're all yes/no questions. And they're intended to essentially take the temperature and give us some guidance as to where we go when we do the draft zoning, the first draft of the zoning. So as I said, both of these sessions will be on the Planning Board's website. We're working on getting the date. That will be up now. Because they are multiple choice, as you'll see by the documents that are going out now. And yes/no, maybe questions. Survey Monkey, which is the company, will be easily able to tabulate the answers. And the results are going to go directly into the draft zoning that we come up with, and also which ones of these topics we bring forward this year and which go forward to next year. So what we get from you and what we get from the members of the public that log on is very important. So, on the visual preference survey, you're getting handed out your score sheet now. And you'll see there's an A, B, C, D, E, and F, and a number of questions for each. And I'm going to be going through with images on the board. They go through pretty quickly, because we're looking for an initial reaction. So what we're asking is, what do you think is appropriate for Milton? And what do you think is not appropriate for Milton? So keep that in mind. We're not necessarily asking whether something is good or bad, ugly or beautiful, but whether you think it's appropriate for this community. So if you circle 1, you think it is very undesirable for the community. 2 is undesirable, 3 is neutral, 4 is desirable, and 5 is very desirable. And we really want both a positive and negative reaction. So if you really don't like something, circle it heavily. So we're going to start. Yes?
My question is, if we've not seen all these signs that are coming up, it seems to me as if there may be some applicability to certain sections of Milton. Or some sign might be really great in Milton, but horrible or very ugly. How do we?
Go in general. Yes? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And I didn't give you, I have a mic here, which I will try and remember for next time if I put it up. So the question is, some of the signs may be applicable to some parts of Milton, but not others, and how we distinguish. I think the distinguishing will come in two things I should mention with the boards. We do have sticky pads, so if you think of any comments that are not a visual preference survey or a yes/no question, please feel free to give them to us. In this, just think of the community as a whole. I agree, that's a fine rein. Most of these are intended for a business district rather than a residential area. But that is a fine rein, an important point that we need to look at for the next round. So the signs that you're going to be looking at tonight are sign types rather than locations. Any more questions I should ask before we get started? Yes?
Does everyone have one?
Oh, that's a good one. And something to write with.
And a little pencil. And does anyone even likes to be adjusted so that they can see? Is everyone okay? I dim the light so that you can see this, but if anyone can't see their paper, let me know. We can fix that. Otherwise, I'll watch you.
All right, great. So as I said, we'll go through these fairly rapidly, because it's first impressions. And here we go. Oh, sorry, one more. I forgot about this one. Not going yet. So the images you will see, they're not from Milton. This is very important. When you do a visual preference survey, you never take images from the community you're working in, because there may be meanings attached to those images. So we're trying to gauge your reaction to different types of signs, different density levels, different heights, building types or building forms. None of these images, and this is very important, none of these images are meant to suggest a proposal for a specific business or a specific building project in Milton. I will say the vast majority of them were taken from Google Images. So, all right, now we're going, signs. And A2. A3. A4. A5. All right, we're moving on to A-frame signs. Those are all blazed. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. These are A-frames. Or also known as sidewalk signs. A7. Okay, thank you. A8. A9. And A10. Okay, now we're going to get a series of lit signs. There's more of these, because they have been more controversial recently. So, A11.
Is this illuminated?
This is illuminated, yep. Yes. Just, that's how it's illuminated. It's a method of illumination we should be looking at, rather than ours. Thank you for that. Yeah, each one of these has a slightly different illumination method. Sorry, that was a little quick. So this is A12. A13. This should, yes, I heard to do what you can. That's absolutely true. This should not be a lot of analysis, just a quick initial reaction. A14. A15. Again, it's a type of elimination for this. Again, just initial reaction. A16. This is a light over, as opposed to the interior illumination. That might help if I told you what the type of illumination was. A17. Also, this is lit from above. A18. More of a traditional, almost neon. Yeah, they're all lit. That's an interior lit. A19. This is an exterior lit from the bottom. And that's what's known as a monument sign. And A20. Lit from above. All right, condominiums, great estates. So for the great estates, we're looking at two different things. The first is how the building looks. So the height, the type of building. And then we're going to be looking at images of these developments. Some of them on Google Maps, some of them will be actual plans. So we can look at how the density is. Now, this is not something that people often look at. So again, do the best you can. We're looking for initial reactions. And there are no wrong answers here. We're not giving people grades. So let's start with-
If you're having a hard time seeing, plenty of room up front.
Yep. And if I do move too fast, because there is a tendency to speed up as you go through, please call me on it. So, B1. B2. B3. B4. B5. B6. Do you need the lights up on this end? Tim, maybe we can turn these, these lights right here just up a little bit? Is that too bright? Maybe the second or the third one down. We were experimenting earlier.
Yeah.
B7. Can people in the back see that image okay? B8. B9. And B10. All right, we're going to start on the density now. So these will all be either Google or images from maps. So I'll start with this first one, what you're looking at. And the images may not be as clear, so do your best. See how the buildings are grouped together. So each, these are actually tagged to the images you just saw in the same order. So each of these, you'll see this hexagon around the grouping that you're looking at.
And we're just talking about the density.
The density here.
Emily, can you give us an idea how many units there are in that space?
I'm sorry, first we had a question of acreage. I don't know the acreage. Yes, I don't have the units per space. But you can look at their configuration. You'll see as you go through that some of them, you can see that they're closer together or further apart. You can get a relative idea of their scale relative to the rest of the neighborhood. The other thing that you'll see is how these are. So you see this one in particular is near a quite dense area here and a quite open area there. So you'll see different patterns as you go through. Again, don't worry about too much analysis. Just go with your gut on this. All right, B12. And again, this is the cluster you're looking at within the hexagon. B13. B14. B15. B16. Yes, in fact, I'll go back to B15 since. B16. B17. So, this, we're lucky enough to actually have the dimensions of the whole parcel laid out with the property.
Is that like the cluster zone? We should call that?
That could be a cluster zone, yeah. I don't know the zoning. It's just done under the bucket.
The rest of that would be?
Right.
The rest of that would be open land?
Yes, so the question was, the rest of that would be open land. According, what it looks like from this plan is that would be exactly what that would be. B18. Also a plan of the actual. Yes, I wish we'd had more of these. We should have. It's a little easier than Google Earth. And last one. And this clearly looks like one that's just starting to be under development. All right. So, the next one is condominiums again. Oh, sorry, one more, one more. B20. All right, so the next one is condominiums again. But this time, we're going to be looking at those in transit areas, areas with retail and services already. You will see a difference in how the Great Estates condos look and the transit services look. So, C1. So, again, think of our already more dense areas as you think of these. C2.
Is the color in one of them?
I believe it's the whole thing. It is a good question. This would be your main street, and this would be the secondary street. C3. C4. C5. C6. C7. C8. C9. C10. The transit isn't necessarily in the pictures. It's where in our area we would put these.
You mean buses or?
Buses and the trolley. The two, the two, the two forms of public transit in Milton would be the buses and the trolley. So, for example, on Central Avenue, we already have some condos and some rental units that are within walking distance of the trolley. That would be what you, why you would be making your choice, whether or not you think this is appropriate for our area. And it's why we give you a range of these. C11. C12. C13. All right. So, the next thing is accessory dwelling units. And on these, because some of them aren't quite clear, I want to point out to you whether they're within the existing house or whether they appear to be an addition or a separate building. So, this would be within the existing house, a separate entrance. So, this is D1. And Cheryl is going to tell me if I'm wrong at my desk, because she provided me with some of these. This is D2, also within the house itself. So, this would be a separate entrance attached to the main house. If you were putting a dwelling unit in your house, this would just be a separate unit to the house. You'll see some where the dwelling unit is a separate building on the property.
But it's sort of kind of where it is in relation to the rest of the property.
It's just, this is the, this is all, yes, exactly. This is a look at it. For all of these, one of the reasons we're showing you visual stuff is we, the planning board, could in fact institute design guidelines requiring these, requiring a specific look. Requiring, one of the interesting things about both of these is do they look as though they were the entrance to a main house or to a separate dwelling unit? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
So, can you just help find an accessory dwelling unit? So, I don't, is that no income involved? You're not renting it?
That would be something that we'd have to consider. At the moment, the way it's done, the accessory dwelling unit is intended to be for family. I don't think any of us have yet proposed that that change. But if that's something that as we go through the comments and the process, people want to see or don't want to see, we would certainly look for comments on that. So, at the moment, we're not proposing it, but it could be considered. So, this is D3. This is also within the unit. But maybe it's a little bit, oh, no, actually, sorry. This is a separate building. Here's the main building, and here's the... So, how I read it, Cheryl, do you know? That's right. So, main building here, separate building here for the accessory dwelling unit. D4. So, this is a plan, and what it's showing is the main unit here with its accessory dwelling unit as a cottage here, main house here, accessory dwelling as a cottage, main house, accessory dwelling as a cottage.
Where's the main street? Those cars are owned by a driveway or a main street?
Looks to me like it's a driveway here and that this is the main cul-de-sac. Yes.
Would it be helpful for people to understand that there's a, there is a bylaw that allows you to install an accessory unit within a dwelling if there's an attached garage? So, if the garage is attached to your property, you want to have a mother-in-law or a maid or au pair move in, you can put a separate unit in that building.
I forgot that attached garage is counted. Thank you for that.
That's allowed with a permit from the Board of Appeals. If you have a detached garage, you can't do it. So, this would be, these would not be allowed under current zoning. But it might be acceptable if there was a nice plan as to how you could do it.
Does that mean people in the main house can rent those other units?
Well, again, that would be part of what we would discuss. So, this is just an image. That goes to conditions, and we haven't gotten, yes. Now, no.
Now, you cannot. Currently, it can only be available for an in-law or-
A caretaker.
Caretaker, someone who would be related to the family, living in the dwelling, but having a separate kitchen, bathroom, living area that's separate from the main household.
Thank you, Ned.
Would that be taxable?
As a separate, it would be part of the property value. Now, if you made it a rental unit, that would become a question. So, as it would be, yeah.
The set up is?
Yeah. Let's finish going through the images, and I'm going to take a round of questions on sort of technical details before we move on to the questions on the board. So, this is D5. This would also be a separate unit from the main household. And again, this goes to what sort of, if we allow as a town these separate units, what sort of design guidelines might we consider? D6. This is above a garage. Could be attached, not necessarily.
We assume that garage has existed before.
But I don't know, we don't know that from this. It just shows what it looks like above a garage, a little balcony. And this is detached. What's interesting is I don't actually know which is the main house and which is the accessory unit on that one. All right. Businesses in a residential district. So, again, these photos are all of what businesses that currently exist within a residential district somewhere, not Milton, look like. And we're looking to see what you think of the looks. Again, this, if we decided, whether we decide to do current non-conforming and some sort of bylaw that would allow them to reinvest, whether we decided as a town that we wanted to add additional ones, we'd probably want to do some sort of design guidelines on those. So, how they're allowed is not yet the point. It's what they would look like, yes.
Is the sign included?
The overall look. And actually, that's a really good point. Because these are businesses in a residential district, they do have signs. Absolutely include your opinion of the sign and your opinion of the overall look. So, and again, first impressions. I will say that the visual surveys are not easy to do. So, I am impressed, I mean, easy for you guys to do. So, I had help from my fellow planning board members. So, this is E2. And this is, this photo isn't as clear. This is the business next to a church. This is E3. This whole thing is the business with its sign. E4. And this is the business with the parking. And it looks like there's a sign there. E5. Again, this whole thing is the business. It has its sign. E6. The red is the business. E7. Business here, sign here, parking here. E8. That's the business, the red building. E9. And this is the, this first building is the business. B10. This is the business here. And it's got a sign right there. E11. That's the business. And then, the house on either side. Okay, Bed and Breakfast. This is our last one. Again, actually similar to the businesses that we just saw. Most Bed and Breakfast are, unsurprisingly, going to be in a residential neighborhood. So, when you look at these, consider the building, the way it looks, the signage, because signage would be part of a bed and breakfast. And there may be some other parking, how that's laid out. There might be some other things through here. So, this is F1. F2. And I would say that this would be behind from a house. F3. So, house and sign. F4. Sign and clock. I don't know that for sure, but my guess is it's probably a neighbor. I think there's, it looks on here like there's a little bit of a fence or a trellis right there. So, I would assume it's a neighbor. And then, F5. Note, by the way, on F5, but they also serve high tea. Okay, so, we are going to go on to zoning questions. So, planning board members are going to collect these visual preference surveys from you as you start to move out. And in return, they're going to give you a string of dots. And as far as we can tell, there should be one dot per question as you go around. Each table has a different topic on it. I think that table over there behind John Cronin has two topics on it. And what, all we're asking you to do is go through, look at the yes, no, maybe questions. I'm told that there is one question that is accidentally not a yes, no, maybe question. So, see if you can find it. And answer yes, no, or maybe to the questions. Now, these, again, are designed to take the temperature. They're more technical questions. So, where this is all about visual, just to take an example for Bed and Breakfast, questions like, should Bed and Breakfast be owner occupied? We actually had a woman in, who called, spoke to the planning board, and then I had a long conversation with her, who wanted to start a Bed and Breakfast, but she didn't want to occupy the Bed and Breakfast. So, I said, well, as, I had originally talked about it, it'd be owner occupied, but maybe people don't mind if it's not owner occupied. So, that's one question. Another question for Bed and Breakfast, and to that point about high tea, should Bed and Breakfast be allowed to do things other than Bed and Breakfast? Should they be allowed to weddings exactly, or graduation parties, or something like that? So, that's a yes, no, maybe. We'll be using that directly to help figure out how we want to write the zoning language. There are also, as I've said before, there are little sticky pads around. If you have a question as you've thought about these or as you look at the questions on the board that can't be answered by yes, no, maybe, please write that down. And we will take that and also use it to, Tim and Julie will write them all up, and then the planning board members would use that as we go through our zoning. So, and each planning board member has a responsibility for different zoning. So, planning board members and staff are already wearing their name tags. If you have any questions at all, hunt us down, and we'll do our best to answer them. Yes?
I just want to add to the question of context.
Hang on, let me, let me give that to you now.
I just want to come back to the question of context for a minute.
Yes.
And could you take some of the slides possibly that you showed before, give us an example of how you would take some of those incorporated into a design specification, because my concern is, all of these pictures, a lot of them are fantastic, and they're all applicable to individual specific places. What's really my backyard might not be good in humans.
Right.
And my concern is that if, if we end up in a design review that is too specific and too restrictive, you're not going to be able to adjust all the stuff, the unique characteristics of the town, in whatever section of the town these way develop.
So that's a great question. Thank you very much. And one of the reasons we've got these two different types of condominiums is precisely because of that, because we feel in looking at it and the conversations the planning board has had among itself and with people who have been interested in it, and in the Citizens article that came before town meeting, the planning board spent a couple of nights listening to people who have comments on it, and through all these conversations, it's become clear that writing design guidelines for condominiums in the more rural parts of Milton is very different from writing design guidelines in the area where there is already more density, there are already more businesses. And so just to take a couple of examples from the transit and services area, one of the things that the design, well, first of all, that zoning could address would of course be height and massing and bulk. So you see, for example, the height of these compared, you've already collected all of the design surveys, right? I don't want to prejudice any of the answers. So the height of these buildings, for example, versus the height of these buildings. Other things that design guidelines can address can be materials, treatment of the facade. Frequently, the planning board, for example, has required that the facade on all sides be given equal treatment, so you don't just have the, the front of the building looking beautiful and then the back of the building made with a lesser material. It can address how the, the windows look within, the proportion of the windows and the doors within the facade. If it is a long building, let me see if I can, so if it's a long building like this one, design guidelines can regulate where the entries are within the building, so you don't have a blank wall and the entry right in the middle. It can regulate how much transparency you have on the ground floor, especially, for example, if we were to allow residential above retail in, say, East Milton, we would want to create what planners call active uses on the ground floor, and everybody else calls retail and restaurants. And then you want a certain amount of being able to look in and see what's going on in the retail and restaurants. Now, if we were to jump back to the Great Estate building, sorry, I know this is dizzying, you see a couple of differences here in the Great Estate. So this is clearly a multi-family, multi-story building that has required different ways of dealing with the facade, where you've got the sort of in and out movement here, you've got the pitched roofs, but that is a very different design from this, which is a condo made to look like a single-family house, or this, which is a condo. Now, some of these condos that are looking like single-family houses may actually have two or three units in them, but the point is that rather than being a multi-story, multi-family, they're more of a, a single-family type of dwelling. And so this is the sort of thing we'd look in the design guidelines of differentiating between these, and this is why your visual input to us is so important. For design guidelines on, say, neighborhood businesses, we would be looking pretty much for the, the same thing as we talked about in the signs. Here, for example, we see the businesses right up at the front, it's nice and landscaped in the front, it's got a sign that's large-ish, but it's a very different look from this business, which is set back from the street, has its parking in front, has a sign sort of off to the side there, and very, very different from, let me find my favorite, the Vermont Country Store, where you're right bang on the street, you've got two, now whether or not this is suitable for Milton is another thing, but it's a great old store. So, you know, that's the consideration, and that's why I asked you to think of what was suitable for Milton versus what was pretty or beautiful or ugly in that matter. I was thinking of the mine.
I talk loud.
Okay.
Emily, this is an outstanding presentation, but yours is very professional. The demographics in this school are very skewed. This should be shown to the different demographics of the town. It's really a great job, and I think it's too skewed to get all around Upoint, Milton, I think, because it's really, a lot of work went into what you've done here.
Well, thank you for both me and for the members of the planning board that contributed to the planning happens. So this was very much a joint effort, and I should also recognize Tim, who, yes?
I had a...
Tim, who has a question, sorry.
It's a comment.
Can I, can I address this?
I was gonna, who's gonna address it, yeah.
Okay, I'll address it and then you'll fill in, how does that sound? So Tim, who also did an amazing job pulling everything together. So, yes, the, the problem with doing any meeting in a physical space is you're going to give to people who can show up, whether it's access, or it's time of day, or it's, you know, I didn't have a sporting event, so I was able to come, you know, whatever. So public meetings are always challenging as to who is able to come out. So we're doing two things. One is, this is being filmed, which I should have said at the beginning, and will be rebroadcast on Milton Cable, and thank you very much to them for doing that. So people will be able to see this whole presentation. The other thing is, we're going to put the presentation itself online, we'll do the online survey, and then we will do the means for people to give comments back, both on these. They'll be able to take this exact same survey, but online, and also the boards, we're going to do those as a survey.
Did you advertise a little bit so that I won't be able to...
We, we actually did a lot of advertising, and I really want to give Tim credit for this, because I said, you know, Tim, we really need to do all of the papers in Milton Cable Vision, all of the neighborhood districts, and, you know, we should do Celebrate Milton, and We Are Milton, and these people, and that people, and the other people, and he pulled it all together and sent it all out. So it's getting to be summer, school, if it hasn't closed now, is about to be closed. And, you know, again, we're on a tight timeline this year. So Tim, you had something that you wanted to fill in. Oh, do you want a mic?
Hi, Emily said most of it, but this is actually, and this also addresses a pinch point from earlier, it's, it's part of a holistic approach that the board is trying to take towards outreach. It involves this public meeting, it involves the online survey, it involves the regular public hearing process that the board's going to do. One of the reasons for that sign-in sheet over there is to get all of you on an email list so you can stay updated as to what the board is up to, different events that they're planning. I, we asked you to fill in your address, we are trying to figure out sort of where people are coming from, and what parts of town do we need to get to, you know, in a better way, and really help us, and by us, and you, the planning board, you know, figure out, you know, who, who, who the board's reaching, who they're not reaching. We, we encourage you to tell all your friends to, to look out on the planning board website, it'll be on the town Facebook page, so, and thanks for coming out also.
You might put age, you'll give a range.
As part of the, we could certainly do that as part of the online survey, we've done that before. I've got two more questions, I saw her hand first and this here.
Will the survey remain open? So, I think to Julie's point, this is, this is terrific. I applaud your efforts to get it, but it's a nice way for the role to play about, but you're more than a barrier, so maybe because we are, we actually hadn't heard about this meeting except by way of somebody else. But I, I guess one question, how will it serve the open so that people can participate?
So the, that's an excellent question. The survey will be online for at least four weeks from the time it goes up. Our next meeting is July 28th. I would actually expect that the survey would go a little bit beyond that, because July 28th can be the first round of draft zoning, and then August will be the second round, but we want to make sure again, but at least four weeks from when it goes up is the first, is the answer to that question. So, and we will publicize it as much as we can, including sending out to all of you the, a notice that is there, so you can forward it to your friends. So, yes ma'am, I saw yours and then, unless there's others.
I just wanted to say I think it's an excellent presentation, and I appreciate it, but one question which wasn't addressed and maybe doesn't lead to be, is about landscaping. A lot of those places look wonderful, but if the landscaping isn't done according to the building, it's useless, you know, it, it won't look pretty like something else.
So that's an important point. Design guidelines can cover landscaping, and if that's something that, where'd Tim go, we should make a, we should make a note of that, so that, that's something we should be, okay, one more, yes.
I hope it covers sidewalks too.
Okay.
Using developments on both sides.
Okay.
For walkable.
Great, thank you. All right, are you ready to use your dots now? And then, so what we're going to do is, you'll wander around probably about 30 minutes, and I'll bring you up for a wrap-up, and we'll all be out of here before nine. So, on the planning board's website soon, I'm not going to give a date yet, or, you know, Tim will be a little upset with me. So the final master plan is going to be on the website soon. Again, the planning board approved some changes at our last meeting, which Tim is inputting, and then that will be up. This presentation will go up. Also, the link to the interactive survey, the survey monthly, for the images and the questions that we looked at today. Our next meeting on this topic will be July 28th, we'll be presenting our draft zoning for the topics that we're moving forward with. That's going to be at either the high school or Kier's, and I want to take this time to thank Fuller Village for hosting us here. This room is great for these types of presentations. And they were kind enough to set everything up and let us come in here. So if you have questions about today's workshop or the zoning process, forward them over to Tim. Also, planning board members' emails are on the website. And thank you very much for attending, we really appreciate it.